I think I'll just call this meeting to order. It's about 5:29 instead of 5:30 according to that doc. Okay. Public input. Shala.
Let's kind of sweep the... For those of you who don't know, I have a select one with me. It's Karen Noys from the Finance Department of the Town Office. At our last Selectman's meeting, Brian Ward made a proposal to lower our tax rate by using a bunch of reserve funds that the school district allegedly had available. And I say allegedly because I don't know whether they do or they don't, or if they do, if it's any version of the amount he suggested. The point of me being here and Karen is to tell you that only today we found out we can't do anything. It's too late. The tax rate cannot be changed this year. Can we do something in future years? Perhaps. But for now, it's over. We had a ruling from the DRA, which is the Department of Revenue Administration. That ruling was backed up by the town's attorney. It's too late. And I'm sorry because I think Brian and I at the Selectman's meeting had some hopes that we would be able to cut the tax rate. We can't do it by that method. Actually, we can't do it by any method this year. It's... Karen can tell you a little better than I really why it went up so drastically. And it's pretty much on the "do the dam" thing.
The dam had an assessment that dropped about $30,000, which affected the amount of taxable property there was in Littleton. Today, Andrew and I kind of backed back into last year just to see what the difference is. That value had not gone down. It stayed the same as last year, the assessed value on that. The difference would have been 94 cents on the tax rate. But it had to be reevaluated. We had tax abatement on it. The assessment had to change. We had a committee that was part of figuring out the assessment value on the dam. I hate to say it's better to try to deal with it in one year, but in past years, we had to battle with TransCanada, and we ended up having to take a large bond to cover what we needed to pay them back. So instead of having a $6 million bond out there that we have to pay over time, we have a tax rate that hit us this year. And next year, we don't believe it's going to be as bad, and we'll do everything we can to increase the value.
And possibly some of the savings that Brian suggested might be able to be utilized next year. And very iffy and might because I don't know. But he had a good idea. It just won't work this year. And I just... I want to let you guys know and let you know that we're supporting you. That's why we wanted to come, just so you knew from the horse's mouth. There's some questions. Should we get another opinion? Well, we got the DRA, and we got the town attorney. I'm pretty satisfied that you can't do it. Questions?
Go ahead. How is there... Is there any way to get more warning when it's going to go down greatly?
The assessed value is usually presented to DRA in October.
So all our budgets are set by...
Right.
Yeah. So we're just kind of in this... Yep. Okay.
Maybe little and not much. Not enough to make a difference.
Not enough to... We can't control it really given that. Because I think our forms for our tax rate are doing September. You know? So it's very challenging.
Yes, it is.
Yours are even worse than ours.
Okay.
Not good news, but it's all I know that I have.
At least we have, you know, documentation from Jamie Dow and one from our attorney saying that it cannot be changed this year.
Yeah. We researched it this afternoon. I think we found out the same thing.
It was worth a try.
It was. It was. It's a good idea, and something may come of it. But I'm afraid by going to the Selectman's meeting and having it on Channel 2, some hopes were raised, and it's not going to happen this year.
Did you have a question, Al?
I was just going to ask, the dam's been sold, I understand? Or in the process, any forecast?
It hasn't closed, but there's a purchase and sales agreement, I understand. And your guess is as good as mine, where that's going to go. One of the problems, we've gone way back, and it doesn't help anything today, but there was a group of citizens a number of years ago that said, you know, "The dam's getting away with murder. Let's check their assessment." So, "Make them pay their fair share." Yeah, we did it. And of course, they grieved it, and we lost. Now we had to take out a bond to pay them back. Got to be careful. And that has little, if anything, to do with today's predicament. It's part of the history.
Yes.
Thanks, Karen.
We appreciate you.
Thank you very much.
We're going to let you get out of here, business.
Thank you. Good to see you.
Any further public input? Okay.
Thanks, Keith.
Thanks, Karen. I think we'll move and let the mental health team do that first, and we'll do events like that.
Okay. So for those of you who don't know, I'm Caitlin Joubert. I'm the Middle School Guidance Counselor and the Student Assistance Program Counselor up at the middle high school. And I have the pleasure of speaking to you first. But this year, we have put together a mental health team that is K-12, so includes both -- all three guidance counselors, the school psychologist, the school nurse up at the high school. And we try to get the school nurse at the elementary school involved as much as we can because she's busy down there and needs to stay down there. But and our clinical school social worker. So we met twice this year, and we've kind of talked about where we're at in the district with our mental health and kind of where we are and as far as maybe a little bit of how we effectively help the kids as well. So we're kind of taking a look at that this year. So we are going to present some data to you. I do have some handouts in case you want to look at these instead of at the projector. Might be a little bit easier. Thanks, Caitlin.
You're welcome.
All right. So the first piece of data is looking at our demographics. So we pulled the pre and reduced lunch. So we went back 10 years, two years in this year as of October 2016. And the reason why I'm showing you this data is because this affects the student population that is coming in that we serve. So these students typically require more additional support and services from our mental health team. And as you can tell, there's a pattern of most of the time, it's increasing the amount of students that apply and can receive free and reduced lunch numbers. Typically, it's higher at the elementary school than at the middle and high school. But these are typically... These are the numbers that we've been seeing over the past 10 years. We see 10% of transient students, and these students move in and out throughout the year. So they'll start with us maybe at the beginning of the year, and then we'll move out in December, say, to a completely different school. And this... These students typically come from lower-income families, so we have to provide them some additional support as in individual counseling or even offering them places in our charter programs or learn program because they don't necessarily adapt well to be in a regular classroom.
What I've noticed too, Caitlin, over the years, because I've been here a while, is that the transient students are coming more in the middle of the school year and through the beginning and the end. So they're in transit during the school year, which makes it even more difficult for that student to adjust in the school, as you well know. And some of them have histories of being in various schools before they get here, so...
Yeah. I've had students that will have been in five different schools in about six years' time. So the next piece is students on 504 plans. So 504 plans are designed for students who may need a little bit extra support in the classroom, and they get accommodations that the teachers provide them. So we have 11% of students at the elementary school and 13% of students at the high school and middle school. The counselors are responsible for managing these 504 plans. So we set the meetings. We distribute all the plans at the beginning of the year, at each quarter, at each semester. And we are in charge of making sure that the teachers are adhering to these plans. It's a legally binding contract document and could get into some serious trouble if they're not followed. So those are kind of our roles.
If I could just add to that, too.
Yep.
The 504 plans, in case you don't know, are students who've generally been on a special IEP.
Not necessarily.
And then, or if they have, they're going to be in on 504. So there's still a disability that has to be addressed.
Yep. I thought it was like if you... A part of it could be if you had a hearing loss.
Yes.
But not necessarily all the kids on 504s would have been on IEPs.
Correct.
Right. Okay. I would say that's actually a smaller percentage. Most of the kids who are on there have been on there for a variety of hearing... It could be a temporary thing, like they broke their leg and can't participate in gym for the quarter. So that brings us to the IEPs. 15% of our students at the elementary school, 12% of students at the middle school, and 15% of students at the high school. These plans are managed by the special ed case managers, but some students require individual and group counseling. So we, as counselors, are responsible for providing that. And typically, if a student has counseling on their IEP, we offer once a week to meet with them for about 30 minutes. Sometimes it's twice a week, depending on the needs of the student. And then homeless and double-up occupancy. So double-up occupancy is when a family moves in with another family. So it could be a relative moving in with another relative, a friend moving in with a... Like a relative moving in with a friend. And it could be a temporary situation where they're just living there to find their own place. Or it could be a permanent solution, and they don't have any ownership in the house. They don't own it. They don't... They just are staying there as part of the family. So 3% of our students at the high school and middle school, and 8% of our students. And what we find with the double-up occupancy and the homeless students is they're either very angry, or they have a lot of anxiety around it. And that could be for the students that are already living there as well. They could be angry that someone else is moving in. They could be sad about... They could be sad about, you know, having to stay in a car or at a campground or in a shelter. So these students, we try our best to support them and usually see them when they are having a crisis situation. Okay. And then the last one in this one is the kindergarteners that they are seeing this year. Did not... 34% did not receive preschool services, which means that they saw no formal education before coming to the elementary school, which means that the teachers are working with students who don't know how to sit. They don't know how to focus. They don't know how to listen. And so as counselors, especially at the elementary school, we're tasked with having to work with those students on a very intense individual basis of trying to get them used to being in a formal education setting. So I want to talk a little bit about the programs that we offer for those students who may need that support. So at Lakeway, we have the CHOICE program. Lisa, I'm going to have you talk about that for a second because I don't...
So our CHOICE program is basically, it's an alternative classroom within the school itself where students that aren't able to be in the regular ed classroom may be accepted into that program. And then as they show growth through a pretty intensive behavior support plan, they start integrating back into the regular ed population. So they might start by going back into a music class or going into a science class, whatever their skill and comfort level is, until eventually we can fully transition them back into the regular program. Pretty much. Okay. So then at Daisy Bronson and the high school, we offer the LEARN program. So students will come in at about 3 o'clock in the afternoon. It's a night program, and they'll do online classes. This is typically offered to students who are sophomores, who are seniors, and already have some credits under their belt, and they just need a different setting to get finished with their high school diploma. 5% of our students are at the Charter Academy. So these students go down to the Charter Academy at the old hospital building and complete work down there, and they can get their high school diploma that way. And then our Littleton Academy, we have 5% of students down there. So this is an alternative behavior program. And some students are fully down there, where they spend all their day except for elective classes down there. Or they do a hybrid schedule where they take some classes up at the high school and some down at the academy, depending on their needs. So at both schools, we have support teams. So ours is called the Student Support Team up at the high school. And as of last year, we looked at numbers, and 28% of students were brought to our team, which means that 28% of our students needed a direct intervention in order to make it through the day, or the week, or the year, or whatever it may be. And it could be for a variety of different reasons. And the students were referred to us either by teachers or by the people who are on the team, the principal, assistant principal, counselors, kind of in our daily interactions with students. At Lakeway, they had 13.1% brought to them, and then 6% of those students were brought back to the team three or more times because they needed to kind of keep trying to find interventions that would work for those students. They just didn't necessarily...
When they are referred to you, that's just that they're referred by the teacher or whoever, and then you take them. You don't analyze it and then say, "No, they don't belong here," or...
No. We have... So the teachers fill out a form, and they have boxes that they fill out. Did you contact the parents? Did you put these interventions into place in the classroom?
Okay. The formula that you use.
Yeah. And we also follow up with the teacher to say, "Okay, this is what we talked about."
Okay.
And it's usually, you know, "We need to schedule a meeting," or we do follow up with the teacher.
Good. Yeah. You have a process.
Yep. Absolutely.
All right.
And then I'm going to have Jane talk about the supports that we offer at both the K-12.
And I'll ask the elementary to add in when it comes to some of their things. This is some of the supports that we use at the two schools. One is Project Success. That's an SAP curriculum that they have for educational curriculums and academic curriculums in the classroom. We have student check-ins and check-outs. If there's a student at risk or think there's any concerns, we'll have them check in with an adult when they come in and check out at the end of the day, when they see how their day went, if there's any issues or concerns that we needed to talk about, anything that we can process during the day that they could do differently the next day if they happened to get into trouble. We make individual behavior plans, at least I do, with individual students. It may be as much as an ice cream cone that I buy them at a cafeteria to help them make it get through the day. We have youth risk behavior survey, which gives us a lot of information about drug use, about fentanyl, that type of thing, albeit use, which you must all know about that. That's huge. Now, we just all went to a conference on that. It's really quite sad. We use incentives and reinforcers. I don't like to say rewards because people don't like to think that we're rewarding students, but I think we all get incentives somehow to what we do in our careers or our lives. So incentives could be legal, sed, or something like that. I do home visits. I know Mr. Baden has gone out and home visits before to ask folks to sign IEPs to assist them in any way that I can. We have special education testing. Obviously, you know about the alternative learning environments that we have. We have LEARN, and we have the Academy. We have V-Lax, and we have the Charter Academy. So I think Littleton obviously does a really great job with that piece of it. We have referral and consultation to outside agencies. For example, I refer some students out to White Mountain Mental Health Center for New Beginning, or some other agency. There's an agency now out of Groveton that has it here, and they work on parenting with families, and they'll go in and do parenting for free, that type of thing. There's... We provide consultation. So we just don't make a referral, but we call afterwards to the parent. Did you... How'd you make it out? Did you get through? Did you get the resources you needed? So we make sure that we link them up with those. There's classroom tools, which I think the elementary girls can talk about a little bit better than I... We don't have a whole lot of those. Did you want to talk about some of those? Lisa or Peggy, that you have the wheel seats and the stress balls?
Just supports that we can give to students who are struggling in the classroom, simple things, just to help them focus better.
So if someone can't sit down all day, they have a tall table so they can sit up and do their work, which makes a lot more sense, actually. Individual and group counseling. I see students individually each week according to their IEPs. I see 30% of the special ed population on a weekly basis. I'm also on call. So I have to provide individual sessions and group sessions. It's usually circumled around social skills or stress reduction or frustration. They recognize frustration before they explode, those types of groups. Celebration of holidays and events. We do that a lot at the Academy. For example, we're having a Thanksgiving dinner tomorrow. The students help prepare it. We talk about something that they're... They're all going to come in tomorrow. We're going to talk about something that they're thankful for. I did... One of our teachers just had a baby shower. We put it on with the students, and the students were part of it. And they said, "We can't be here. We're a boyishukent." And they had those showers now. I know. And they all signed their card. They all participated in that. So they... We consimilate what it's like outside in traditional families. And with every holiday, we'll have a Christmas breakfast, which is great. Social skills classes. I know Drew could talk about those. He's done some with Laura, I believe, in the different individual classes to, you know, just to reiterate how important it is for eye contact, reciprocity in conversation, how important all those things are. I think elementary school has done food drives. Is that right?
Yeah.
And conflict resolution. We have... We do that with peers. I'll bring two girls, usually in middle school, well, two girls in together after their drama, and just talk about how each... She can resolve this and be friends. The Giving Tree, we just started that. That's Christmas, and actually, the teachers take an ornament off, and they pick it to the student. It's a gender, and they... I call the parents and get their permission before we do that, and we write down their shoes, and that's gone over really well. We started that last year, and we have families calling again this year because the need is so great. And of course, we still follow PBIS initiatives. And I put in unconditional positive regard because I think, and I've talked to my colleagues, we all do this. Every day is a new day. So a student can be yelling at you and swearing at you, but you come in, it's still unconditional positive regard. We still respect that child no matter what they do. It's their behavior we want to change, not the child themselves. And I think they understand that in most... And of course, crisis intervention. Myself and some others here also provide that for assessing, you know, any kind of harm, self-harm, or any of that typical thing. So that's kind of some of the things that we provide here for interventions.
No. I'm just grateful.
I think I love that phrase, "slaying."
I can't tell.
Sure. Yeah. So I have an example of an intervention that I delivered. This is a success story, and I have some data to share with everybody about it. I won't go over every single detail because the paper pretty thoroughly covers everything I did. I like to crunch numbers. I like to look at data. I like to make sure that our interventions are working. So I'm just going to hand around this to the audience. I'll take one for myself. One of the interventions that I delivered kind of falls under this type of category, but it's more called a socio-emotional learning curriculum. This is like teaching some of the emotional skills or the social skills that you need to be successful in the school environment. So in January, February, and March of last year, I delivered an eight-week curriculum, 35 minutes a week, to a second-grade classroom. We also took data on different behaviors in December, February, April, and June, so before the intervention, and then long after the intervention. And here is one of the items that we rated, okay? So each teacher, we have a control group that received... Did not receive the intervention, but received just typical supports, like the other ones you just saw up here, right? And then we had the classroom group, which receives the intervention that I delivered. It was a "mind up" curriculum, which is mentioned at the bottom here. And so we started the intervention in January, and what we noticed here is that there was a sharp decline in students' need for emotional support in the classroom, okay? So each teacher is rating every single one of their students on this item here. Appears upset, sad, or anxious during the school day, and requires some teacher support to manage emotions, right? Then I averaged all those between the two classrooms, and that's what this graph shows, okay? So what we see is after the start of the intervention, about a month and a half in, in February, we notice a really large decline. And if you look at the numbers on the rating scale here, it jumped from over three, which would have been, you know, more than 50% of the time, these students, on average, needed some support to manage their emotions in the intervention group. They started out higher than the control group, and then in one month's time, it went down to below two, which means that it would be below 25% of the time. It would have to be that. On average, most of their students needed emotional support to get through the school day. And what we see is, as the line continues on throughout the end of the school year, the students maintained that behavior. So what this shows me is down here in the findings, it looks like the students who received the intervention needed significantly less emotional support than students who did not receive the intervention. And it looks like they maintained that behavior throughout the rest of the school year. They started out higher than their peers who did not receive it, and they finished off even lower than that. Now, think about this in terms of being a teacher in the classroom, how much time we have to deliver emotional support for your kids. If you jump from over 50% of the time they need emotional support to less than 25% of the time, I'd say that's a pretty good difference. This was an eight-week intervention at 30 minutes each time, and it really didn't take much, but we did see big results here. There's a couple of factors that I put right underneath the graph. These are basically just to control for some variables. So it's the same teacher rating every time, so there's no... Like inter-rater reliability is... It has to be even, right? And so ratings occurred on the same week for both classes, so we're comparing apples to apples as far as dates go. We looked at behaviors just a little over two weeks before the school vacation breaks because everybody knows that right before school vacations, your behavior spikes. So we took measures of the behavior. Let's say that it was around December 10th or 12th, February, around the same dates. April, it was a little earlier, I think. And June, it was like the very beginning of June, right? So we took into mind a lot of different variables that might confound some of these conclusions. And it appears to me that, you know, in eight weeks' time, at 35 minutes in the classroom, that the students need significantly less emotional support. So with just a little intervention, we can make a big difference, especially when we're doing class-wide prevention. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is that SEL curriculum for only elementary, or do they have that?
So I also ran the same curriculum, but instead of an eight-week curriculum, I ran the full 15 weeks at the Littleton Academy. I have those results. What we found was the highest... The biggest effect size was in the area of self-esteem with those kids. So they increased their self-esteem basically over the 15 weeks of the program. We also measured anxiety, and I think interpersonal relations was the other one, but the biggest effect was on self-esteem. Yeah. Yeah.
With internal effects behavior anyway.
Yeah. And though, you know, it's, it's a tricky population to work with as well. If you can increase self-esteem in some of the kids over at Littleton Academy, that could do really big things for them in the long run.
Absolutely. Sound like a great program.
Thank you.
I had one question about the Project Success curriculum.
Yeah.
Can you talk about how that's implemented in the district and what grade levels and how that works? Because definitely I've had some community members inquiring, you know, what we're doing.
Yeah, so the Project Success model is actually a nationwide model that SAPs implement. We're actually having Emily Schaus, who is our grant-funded physician during the program in the ninth and seventh grade health classes. So it really looks at alcohol and substance use and abuse and dependency and goes through kind of the risk factors for it and ways to kind of find alternative, alternative ways to spend time in the danger of using drugs and alcohol. So I believe that she started that a couple of weeks ago in both of the ninth, seventh and ninth grade health classes. Adapted to each grade level, but it really focuses on having the kids look at, okay, so what are my risk factors? And what, why do I need to stay away from drugs and alcohol and other substances?
And do, is everybody in seventh grade take health now? Is that, or is that, how does that work for, because I do?
Yeah, so it's an elective class that we offer among many. So if there, in the, if students are banned or in course, it would depend on whether they get it or not because banned in course are all year as opposed to a quarter class. So some students, we try to get as many students in through the health classes as we can, but we have other factors that they may not be in there, so.
Yeah, so it's probably not, so not everyone in middle school is getting that curriculum?
Correct.
Okay.
We had talked about doing it in advisory, but we're kind of looking at how to adapt it to that for, you know, at the seventh grade level.
And how about ninth grade health? How many, how many students?
All students are required to take health class.
Okay.
So they may take it as a ninth grader. Yes, they may take it as a ninth grader, they may take it as a 10th grader or even a 11th or 12th, but eventually all students have to take health.
And as an SAP, you know, that's your kind of expertise. What do you recommend is the best age to really start these types of preventative conversations? I mean, I think, I mean, do you start it in the elementary grades, I would imagine?
Dare. Still dare in the sixth grade that does a lot of that.
Yeah. I would say most prevention would be best used at, or best done at the elementary school because even by the time they get to middle school, it's sometimes too late. These kids have already found that path. So we really, so it really is more beneficial to do at the elementary school. And we try to talk to the kids about the effects on the brain and the development around that. And so there's a lot of conversations around it, but I would say elementary school is the best option for those.
And is the school counseling children who are abusing alcohol and substance, who are abusing substance abuse, is that something that's provided within the realm of the school?
As far as counseling?
Yeah, are you, do you have, I mean, are they referred out if they're in that situation?
Because you need a licensed alcohol drug counselor who's, who's licensed to do that in order to provide them what they really need.
Well, laydeck, and there, there are few and far between in the North Country. So regular clinicians do see them outside, you know, in the outside community, but for treatment, we refer them. At least I do, I'll do a little bit of, but I refer them out to outside therapy because they're going to need, you know, a 24/7 piece that school doesn't offer.
And you mentioned counseling for kids who are on IEPs.
Yes.
Do you have to be in an IEP to get counseling?
No, about 20% of my caseload is from general ed also. And then I serve 100% of the school.
So if your parent are getting a divorce or something like that, you would have access to some type of support?
Available to everybody as much as I possibly can be.
Yeah. So we kind of, we try to, I know at the high school, we have three and a half counselors. So we try to, you know, meet the kids as much as we can or we try, like, if I'm busy, but I know that Mr. Shea is not, then I'll say, oh, you know, can you, you know, do you mind? We kind of just let the kids come and see whoever they need to. It's not strictly, oh, you're in middle school, so you have to see me. We try to be very accommodating in that. And I know I've had some boys that feel much better talking to a male counselor than they do to me. Same vice versa, females will come to me. So we try to provide flexibility with that as well.
You're fun.
So do you all feel that you're being resourced enough to meet the present level of need? I mean, there's always the, the wastelist, but do you really feel you're resourced enough now to meet the present level?
We only have one counselor at Lakeway, so I definitely know that Lisa bears that burden. And Peggy Bronley as our behavior coach picks up a lot of that support too. But there's rarely a day or a time when both of them or Eric, myself, Dana, that we're not getting all called out to that. I think the piece that's probably missing the most is that prevention. We're dealing with kids in crisis constantly, so getting ahead of that and having the time and the resources to do that prevention is really where I see us lacking at Lakeway.
I told, I told, even at the high school, I think it's the prevention piece. We can handle the crises as they come up because there's enough of us that can handle that, but we just can't do the other pieces of it, the prevention pieces. Then that's why Emily's doing the classroom piece because I was, I'm not able to do that with the guidance piece that I have on top of it. But I think that prevention piece is huge.
That's what's actually recommended by the National School of Counseling Association's model, preventive ed all the way through. I'm currently in the kindergarten once a week, teaching social skills, but because of my caseload, I can't be in every grade level, so I come in for special topics. If a teacher's experiencing something in the classroom, I'll come up and do a special topic on it. But ideally, it'd be nice to be in there, at least maybe weekly for a quarter, to do a bit of that prevention piece, which is what we're hearing nationwide about prevention with substance use and abuse right now.
And Peggy, you piggyback on that? I mean, you have to.
So I take, right now, students in small groups and work on, we have social groups, but, but not in, you know, not fully on the classroom.
Right, yeah.
Students who struggle with it the most, I, we definitely see weekly.
We are constantly in communication. I also have groups, motivational aggression groups, stress management groups, so we make sure we're servicing as many kids as we can in the best capacity. Probably five times a day, we're talking.
And we have a full-time elementary health teacher, right? Who sees all the students? So what's that curriculum like in terms of this? I mean, are we embedding some of this in that?
Yes, absolutely. She does a lot of health and wellness bullying. But she only sees them, I think it's 26 times a year. So getting all of her other curriculum in there as well. She does, last year, I think we had a really heavy focus on bullying prevention and being an upstander. So she took on a piece of that as well. And actually, we asked Amy Kopp to address that in the library as well. So we try to, through the PBIS model, we try to identify areas of concern and sort of rally around that as best we can with all the staff. We, we make it work. Certainly not ideal, but we do use all of those resources. And we do have Dare, they come in. He's a surgeon gardener, has already started that program at the sixth grade this year.
How often does he come in?
Once a week for just the sixth grade. They do have programs for younger age groups, but they just are short-staffed. They don't have the, the resources right now to implement that. But I'm, you know, if, if they did, they would provide that as well, but they just don't right now.
So once a week for the entire school year or once in, for 10 weeks or something?
Yeah, it's, I want to say it's 12 weeks, but.
Yeah, I think it's only 12 weeks. So is there, so I guess, thinking of this person who I want to get back to, who's asked me specifically about our sort of drug intervention curriculum, do we have one that we're using K to 12 or you don't? And nothing embedded in the health, the elementary health class that they all see?
Not much with drug awareness at the elementary school.
I think some of the better models actually just incorporate as much of what we're talking about as possible. It's not just choosing one particular curriculum. It's really trying to provide prevention throughout the entire K through 12, right? So if we can support all of our students, not only the ones who are of the highest need, not only the ones who come up through leadership, who come up through the SSD meetings, if we can really try to think about it in the prevention standpoint and in a community standpoint where we can really get involved with some of the outside agencies and work with them as a school, those are the best models as far as drug prevention. It's not any one particular program. It's trying to incorporate as many of the different evidence-based practices into our schools as we have the resources to handle.
More questions?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Enlightened us, we appreciate that.
Yeah, we'll have an answer question at any time about what's going on at the school and what we're doing. It's just a bunch of snapshots of what we're doing, so.
You did, you did a survey last year.
I did a what?
A survey last spring sometime.
Yep, the Use Risk Behavior Survey, which will be happening this spring as well. They do it, the state does it every two years. And then something you could talk to us about? It's on the website, they gave us it as well. Yeah, so it's like a 96-page document. And I wrote down the highlights of it.
Well, it's interesting.
But yeah, if you have any specific questions about.
I'm not going to remember. Six years.
Where is that?
Lincoln.
In Lincoln?
Select word and school.
It's harder. He's really honest.
Your tax rate didn't go way up.
No, it went down.
And your set value went up a little bit.
Yes, yes, it did.
I have the water.
We're on the policy. We have no water, we have 10,000 to 15,000 people coming today. We have no water. So they better not take showers. Or nothing on.
I'm kidding. Water. Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, thank you.
Okay, I guess minutes on November 7th. Okay, I move we accept the minutes on November 7th.
Second.
Any errors, corrections, or omissions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Board work session on November 10th. Hearing motion.
Make a motion to accept.
Second.
Any errors, corrections, or omissions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Board work session of November 14th. I move we accept the minutes of the work, of the board work session of November 14th.
Second.
Okay, any errors, corrections, or omissions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. The manifest may be going around. Treasurer's report. I think we want to talk about that.
We're still in a little bit of a tight cash flow situation. As you can see by the, the ending balances at the end of October, the town was also in a very tight cash situation. We did, Karen and I did work together to see what we could do. This past check that we received, we took half of what we were scheduled to receive. As you know, sometimes in the past, we postponed the payment completely. This time, we could not, but we did reduce it to $250,000. That's enough to get us through the payables that we're working at now and payroll for this week. We'll be okay with that, but it's still very tight. Do not expect another adequacy payment until January. The, some of the reimbursements for, for grants and for a bunch and things like that are starting to come in now, so that, that will help a little bit. So in the treasurer's report, we started with $881,587, had receipts of $767,000, and dispersments of $1,454,000. So we ended up the period with $196,372. Second page shows the year-to-date. And hopefully, the ending balances are the same on both reports.
Thank you.
Also, although the ink was not dry, one was left before your table. Did take a shot at some year-to-date financial information. The one page is the year-to-year comparison. It does show that we're $466,000 higher than the end of October last year. Some of that is simply because we haven't covered so more pieces than perhaps we had last year. Majority of it is because of those items in the budget that we were going up, wages and benefits and that type of thing. Although we're within budget, we're certainly in excess of last year's expenditure at this point. Those lines that exceed $50,000 in variance are somewhat detailed below. I know you've not had an opportunity to review it. Be available to later date if there are any questions on that. We also took a shot at some really crass projections. The other format that we looked at from early last year and then part of the year before takes the two budgets, the original approved and the current adjusted as it stands, and compares it to a combination of our actual expenditures, our encumbrances, and what we anticipate between now and the end of June. Obviously, my crystal ball is not the most accurate. Anticipation will change as, as we progress through the year and get better information. So the column that's outlined in dark black is the estimated variance for budget for each of those lines. Coming down to a total of $460,000. And then there's a separate sheet that just picks out a couple of the major pieces. This will be a work in progress. Yes, this is for the end of October. Yes, it is almost the end of November. We'll see if we can get it up to date and get it rolling forward now. Any questions, I can assist with?
So C was, what's the update for this year or?
That's what we just did.
The only thing with 1718, just to share, we do have a preliminary report from the state. State A will be relatively flat. At least, at least doesn't mean the dollar amount that we'll receive will be about the same as this year. That's a preliminary estimate. And that takes into account our projections of this fringer's lunches, hopefully takes into account the $60,000 a year hit that we're taking on stabilization, funding as well. So that's the best information we have at this point regarding 1718 in terms of the revenue side at least.
Next item on the agenda is Policy EHAA, revised second reading. Do you hear motion to accept the reading?
Make a motion to accept Policy EHAA as presented.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Policy GBEF, which is the school district internet access for staff, revised second reading.
Make a motion that we accept Policy GBEF as presented.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. The next policy is JICL, school district internet access for students.
Make a motion to accept Policy JICL as presented.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Do we have any update on Drivers Ed?
Go ahead and go. We're still in contact with the person that's in Students Drivers Ed, so we should have, we're pretty close to having a presentation for you at the next board meeting. We're still in contact with the person that's in Student Drivers Ed, so we should have, we're pretty close to having a presentation for you at the next board meeting.
Okay. All right. Special Ed Report, Kelly.
Just had a few things on here. For enrollment, we're pretty consistent. We're down a few from August, but we still have students in process of being evaluated right now, so this month. Well, when I checked, it was at a hundred and nineteen, but I think we're actually up to a hundred and twenty again. For staffing, we have a point-five vacancy for preschool para, and hopefully, we're in the works to fill a long-term subposition at Littleton Academy. Indicated thirteen, which I had presented on, the transition monitoring for special ed students sixteen and older. The state does monitoring in a cycle, and we're up this year for that. And December eighth is the day that they'll be coming up. It'll probably take three or four hours for them to complete the audit, but they randomly select four students who are receiving special ed services that are ages sixteen and older. And they look at specifically the transition services and the transition section of the IEP. And then I did attach the compliance and improvement monitoring district score. That is the process that the state uses to select the districts that are going to be up for special ed monitoring. And pleased to see that we're a hundred percent compliant, and we have been for the last several years, for sure. I hope that that continues though.
Good job.
I think if you don't mind, we'll switch, I'd like Dale to go.
Dale.
And excuse him after he's done.
Sorry, I have to coach tonight. Not running home, don't worry. So just the first page, I just thought of some interesting facts about our parent students at the high school as well as Daisy Bronson regarding our student information system Power School. And how many, and what percentage, I guess, of student access, student records have been accessed? You know that it's sixty-six percent at the high school and over eighty percent at the middle school. I think that that shows that our parents and/or students are highly active and highly involved. And you can, you can see on the report the number of sign-ins per day by students and/or parents to check grades or classes or assignments or anything. So that's a positive, in my opinion, from our end. Might not have a lot to do with technology, but the Chromebook one-to-one rollout is expected to be a week from today. Special thanks to the Technology Committee for, for working with us to get that rolling. As well as Jen and Joanne for being at the parent meetings that we hosted a few weeks ago. They were fun, enjoyable, a lot of feedback, and we were able to answer a lot of good questions that were raised. And then also to Lori Wood, we spent the last two days together in the library labeling the Chromebooks, and we're all done except for grade seven, which will be completed tomorrow so that this can be a full rollout. But she's spent countless hours there the last two days doing that for us, so it's much appreciated. E-rate funding, I've submitted our forms necessary to receive reimbursement for our internet services. This is a yearly thing. It's all dependent, or it's all based on our free and reduced loan percentage as to what we get back. And as of the time that we wrote this, it was at seventy percent reimbursement of what we paid for. The telephone services, the internet, as well as we made some network purchases last year that would be eligible for that as well. It takes twenty-eight days from the first filing before we get the next report back, and then it goes into filing. They have any time, they can pay us any time between those twenty-eight days and the end of the school year. We've received reimbursement into our general fund. Backup solution, so a couple of good things. First off, Power School, we pay Power School to host our student information systems. So if we had catastrophic error, like our student systems are secure, they're not housed here. The accounting information through the school system is backed up in two different locations on servers here as well as at the high school. And we are also working with some different vendors on how to back up the rest of our servers. We have six additional servers that host our internet DHCP, DNS, as well as our active directory. That currently does not have a backup solution in place. So Matt has been working with some different vendors, and hopefully, by the next report, we can have a solution. And then lastly, we mentioned this last week or the week before. We received four proposals back to update our website, which will be discussed at the committee meeting this coming Monday. That's district-wide. Matt and I received demos from all the providers, so we could see how the backend features worked from our standpoint and the ease of use. And then we also presented to, to Mr. Niles, a free website that Matt's been working on, which it would be an option that we could look at if funding was an issue down the road. But what Matt's worked on so far is a hundred times better than what we currently have that we post for our public, so.
That'd be great.
I think that's it.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Had a good practice.
Come over when you're done.
I can tell you had some, two practices under your belt or in your, actually in your voice.
Just, just a jamboree, I'm saying. Thank you.
So our enrollment, as we see from the top sheet, three hundred forty-five, so we've gone up three. Just a knee-ass update, we, the co-chairs are now meeting with the staff members that the steering committee met with to discuss who would be, who would be available or qualified to be co-chair and co-chairs of each of the standard committees. There are seven, so we're looking at a chair and a co-chair for that. And that, that conversation wraps up tomorrow, so I'll know for sure by, or certainly by the next board meeting, I'll have a list of who's, who's doing what committee and that's what's going on there. But we do meet once a week every Thursday, so as we're working through some of those things, we have already ordered the Endicott survey, which will be done in February, which is a self-study survey. So that's been ordered, and we'll look at some other materials that they have also offered to us, additional costs, of course, for demographics and, you know, kind of looking at what the data says about the school when we do the self-study. Then, just moving ahead a little bit, the Red Apple Recognition Award that went to Sam Woodson, recognized for her work, we've talked about that before, about composting, but more importantly, about the very, very number of science instructional pieces that go on alone. So if you've ever had a chance to come by and see some of her work with eighth grade science, she has many, many, many things going on, and it's a pretty busy place, and kids are engaged, and I'm sure she'd love to have you guys stop by. Parent and school and community connection, just Frank Lombardi mentioned to me about the geography spelling bee that was held on November fifteenth. We've got Cole Hadlock and Riley Johnson of Mansleton, second round, who are in eighth grade. And in seventh grade, Vincent Silva. Winner of the second round will be the DBMS champion, but they still have to go on to take a test to compete at Kent Keane State. Top a hundred students are invited to state geography bees, so that's Frank's big project that he's always involved with, so that's still going on. National Honor Society just got back from doing the mobile pack on November fifth, and as you know, that's something that they've been involved with before, they presented in front of you. They actually were able to go and feed, let's see, they packed a hundred and sixty-five boxes of food totaling thirty-five thousand six hundred and forty meals, enough to feed ninety-eight children in one year. So there were a few people, and special thanks to Kristen Roberts and Terry Fillion, who went as chaperones for that trip. So that was, and the picture's on the bulletin board. All New England Band Festival at Plymouth State today. Jenna Dusset and Austin Hastings were going down with Mrs. Noise. I did include the numbers of the music program, as you can see, it's pretty, pretty healthy and growing, and more people wanting to take, get involved with band and chorus. And then in some cases where kids can't fit it into their schedule, they actually play for the concerts and catch up with what the music that they have, because they don't want to miss it, so I just wanted to point that out. Greg Fillion and Jeremy Brown will be presenting, they're, they're the first presenters for our Professional Day Collaboration Lesson. They're doing a development of multimedia projects that cover the history and culture of particular Native American life. So Jeremy is doing the history piece of that, and there's going to be in the gym, they're competing for feathers and that sort of thing, and it's all tied to the Crusader competencies that we developed on our project. So that's the first project that, if you recall, we paired people up randomly, and phys ed and history got paired together, so they're the first to do this. So there'll be a grand march in the gym and kind of thing, and they'll be doing lacrosse and that sort of thing. Tonight also Guidance is doing, Financial Aid is going on for both senior parents and junior parents, if they want to get a head start, and that's from six-thirty to eight.
All right, in the career technical world, we see our goals in staffing enrollment, we did lose a young man who moved away. And also, we had a Littleton girl choose not to continue up at the Paradise CTE in Whitefield. So pretty even, I suppose. Post-secondary connections, we did attend the White Mountain Community College Open House with juniors and seniors who were interested last week. A lot of juniors, seniors have pretty much made up their mind, I think, in a lot of cases. But also, the same day, there's a program, second year, called Tech Woman Ambassadors Program, sponsored by Dred. So we had ninth, ninth grade girls up in Birmingham as well last Friday. So very good day. There've been some positive changes, I think, at White Mountain Community College, trying to embrace the conversation of career pathways. What that means is creating courses that students are taking at the high school level and then at the college level, and earning credit in both locations. So we're trying to continue to expand those, and most recently, we talked about some programs in health science. And it's, it's really positive that students can earn more credits in high school and have a much easier track when they go to medical. And also, we do have a North Country internship program, if you will, from a number of high schools, just in this area, us, Lisbon, and Profile. And we met with Plymouth to discuss internship credit, and we signed an agreement that if students were to take an intern in high school, they would receive Plymouth credit for that. So that's going pretty well. Industry connections, the members of our manufacturing program went up to Burnley, always were received by them, received a great tour of the facility. Opportunity for students to ask questions, and as always, they've been very, very kind to us and opened our doors to us, so we appreciate that. And then I mentioned work, the internship program, another name for it is the North Country Workplace Education Program, I'm gonna go by both names. We'll be hosting a meeting here, and there was a, there's a conflict on the eighth, so I'll probably be at the beginning and have to leave. And I think in the information that you received, there's a brochure on that program, so please, please take a look at that. It's a great program and highly regarded. And talking to others around the state, they don't see the same kind of response from our local businesses and industry as we do here. So we're very fortunate that they open, open their doors to our students and provide them with really meaningful opportunities. Staff development, pretty excited about this, this is something we've done at the career technical, the director's level. There's an executive board of directors, six members, I'm, I'm part of that. And something we recognized as a need was professional development for our teachers. Very difficult for light teachers to get together, a lot of traveling involved, so we contracted a service that is just a professional development platform online. That all teachers are expected to go online and as a facilitator, online, and the real focus is assessments, assessment of our, of our competencies. So sharing, it's like an online professional learning community. And they're gonna share, share ideas and come up with assessments as well. So that's, pretty excited to get that up and running. Other programs, of course, you know, apart from what we do daily, we continually working on is My Turn, a visit in April. And had a nice tour with Jennifer Monahan from the Courier, who usually covers these meetings, so give a tour of our facility. And she wants to focus on maybe a monthly, monthly article on some of our programs. In fact, tomorrow, at Playhouse, you've probably seen it walking through the building. It's outside now, supposed to be delivered on site tomorrow, lifted above some trees with a crane and set in place, and hopefully, she'll be there for that, so. That's it, thank you.
I had quite a few pictures and things attached to my report this time. The enrollment is down a little bit, but we did start two new students today, so as per usual, this will be rolling number all along. Sweeping down to technology, we have four participants attending the Krista McColl conference next week. So I'm looking forward to hearing what they come back with, they're each choosing their own activities to attend that pertain to their needs. One big push and area of interest is student portfolios, so I'll be interested to see what comes back from that, the digital portfolios. And again, with technology, the grade-level teams continue to work with Amy on integrating the tech standards into their daily instruction. She's helping them create lessons to do at each grade level, so that's been really effective. Overall, teams are continuing to work to align curriculum, we've had K-12 discussions with that as well. And with grades having closed last week, we're fine getting our report cards and getting ready to have those out next week. One area that I believe, according to Tom, I need board approval, is the sixth grade overnight hike field trip request, which was attached. It's the same trip they've done year after year, they plan on doing it again. With the large number of fifth graders entering sixth grade, they will have to use both tuts, but they've done that in the past as well. They use their, some of their budget money to support this, and then the fifth, this year's fifth grade will fundraise in the spring, they do the plants, they sell the plants, which is hugely successful to also support that. But my understanding is that I need your blessing for them to do that again next year.
Imagine the field trip policy, if you go overnight, you have to come before the board, so that's why they're saying that.
So it's early, but they want to make sure it's a go so that they can start the fundraising process.
I think it sounds good.
You looking forward to answer tonight?
Well, it doesn't have to be tonight, but the sooner the better.
I make the motion that we accept the sixth grade.
I make the motion that we accept the sixth-grade request for an overnight camping trip for next year.
Certainly.
Can you hear the questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Personnel, we are still short one custodian, but we do have those interviews scheduled for Monday, so that hopefully will be resolved sooner than later. I had quite a few events happening over the last month. I touched pictures of Fiber Prevention Week and Red Ribbon Week, both were hugely successful. Again, the students riding to school in the fire trucks was super exciting and wildly entertaining, so. We had the Book Fair, that was also very successful. I don't know the final numbers on that, but Amy was very pleased. It's held for a week, but it's also open on that Literacy Night, which is the next item. The third through sixth grade Literacy Night had three hundred and forty-nine people in attendance, so that was really nice to see. The superintendent got to vote in the mock election, so I attached that picture as well. The students did a really nice job with that. And then America, oh, the fundraiser winners, they did get to color splash, Eric, Dana, and myself, which was extremely fun for them. I think I'm still finding color dust in my office every once in a while, but that was really exciting. And then I was able to go to lunch with the winners on Friday, with two members of FOEL, so that was exciting. And then we participated in America Recycles Day on the fifteenth, and most of the school was wearing green, so that was nice. Our recycling committee put that together for the building. And then I just want to thank Cory Pennard and his building trades crew for their work on our playground. They've been building the structure that was recommended for increased safety, and the last piece they have, which they'll do next week, is spreading the mulch. So, seeing the big kids out there and all they've written has been extremely exciting for the community and the wing, so thank you to Cory.
Thanks for the pictures.
Well, committee reports, personnel, there's none that I know of, facilities, do you have anything?
We met on last Friday, and prioritized items that were on the budget, and did you, I think it got shared with everyone, right, Steve?
It's not shared with the entire board.
No, not yet, okay.
It's with the committee and whatever. I'm assuming they'll probably work with that through the budget session.
Okay.
Next week, I'll share it with the board, then I'll be happy to do that. I did, I did create that separate document, I'll check and see if we've got it.
Anyways, it was a good meeting, there was input from the administrators on what they felt their priorities were, and it was a good discussion. Progresses made.
All right. Okay, policy, we don't have another meeting until December second, I think it is, at nine o'clock. Superintendent's report.
Okay, I'm just gonna hit a few high points here. School events, yes, I was at Literacy Night, enjoyed that very, very much, and the little mock election, but also all the, all the displays and the demonstration of the students' understanding of the electoral process, and excellent, excellent night. Veterans Day, that ceremony we had up at the high school, again, was a, was a really showcase for the community. I think that we had a, I'm not sure how many people we had there, it was a lot. I don't know how many we typically have, it was a good crowd, I thought. And then, of course, the school play that occurred over a several-day period, and again, I think attendance was, was pretty good. On the nights that I was, I guess I saw three of the four performances. We had to deal with, of course, a bit of a facilities issue on that Saturday, which forced us to postpone the matinee performance due to our little problem with the boiler, but fortunately that, we got that work through, were able to do the evening performance, and then, of course, the, move that Saturday matinee to a Sunday. And then I got to take part in the little group here the other day, when they had their post-production party, that was a, well, it was better than watching the play itself, but it was fun. It was really nice to spend some time with kids, and some of the, the drama, the drama support group of parents, and I thought it was really, really nice. I, one thing that struck me during the Veterans Day event, as well as the school play, which was performed by the student body also, forgot that, but on Monday, the entire student body got to see that performance, was the kids were great, and I'm talking about our audience. Students were excellent in the audience, I thought, for the Veterans Day ceremony, and I thought for the, the play as well. I was very, very happy with what I, what I saw from our, from our student body in the, in the middle school, high school, I want to formally recognize that. Cricket Advisory Council, we've talked a lot, I've talked a lot, we are getting closer. I met with Planning Committee the other day. I think out of, out of a conversation we had, you know, emerging are two areas that we really want to focus on, that being the standard-based learning program and all that entails, a big piece of that is writing the curriculum itself. And then, but, but another area that I, was a strong area of conversation that day was a socio-emotional learning curriculum. What are we doing to support students in this level? We heard a little bit from that tonight, from the mental health team, so I think, you know, those, those two areas are something that I'll take on now to the next group, which will be a little bit broader group of teachers, to talk about focusing on those two goal areas, what they might look like, what it might mean to everybody. Certainly, Goal One is not new. We've been working on standards-based programming for a while, in various, various levels, but perhaps formalizing a bit the socio-emotional piece of the equation may be a little bit new for people, but I think that certainly the planning group, out of that conversation, that, that became something we thought was very important. Lakeway Elementary, one, I was, you know, we've been, we've been looking at some history with this building, and built in the fifties, by the late fifties, it was already apparent that the building was already too small. And I think that's really striking, if, I think, if you think about the history and the baby boomers, and, but think about that building, a building and elementary school, and seven or eight years after it's built, it's too small already. Very different, very different situation most schools have today, declining enrollments and so on. So, so as we know, the second floor was added, and, and through the years, there's been a number of additions. And I think at this point, what we're really focusing on is we look at those additions, particularly the second floor, going forward, what kind of maintenance are they gonna require? Where, where does, where does the entire building, what's the status of the entire building in terms of building standards, in terms of safety, getting in, getting out, in terms of the, the physical plan? We know there's a number of issues that we, that we need to pay attention here, but particularly, particularly looking at the second floor, and some of the issues involving that going forward. We do, we have had a second, an architect take a look at, at that particular addition to, again, to look at his findings compared to some earlier findings that we've become aware of, that, that, again, has caused us a bit of a pause to make sure that, that that building is up to code and will serve the needs in at least the near future. Okay, that's a little bit, we know none on the agenda, none on my, none on my report, but certainly the ongoing work with the, with the budget is important. I think that, I don't think anybody was, was, could be happy when, when the, when the tax rates came out. We're certainly surprised, and I think, you know, we've put some effort into trying to look at how we can help with that, and we certainly will be looking at how we can help in the, in the immediate term, which might not be much, after the news we got tonight, but certainly going forward, we know we have some work to do there to, to try to maintain a reasonable tax rate and still do what we need to do to educate our kids, and, and someday replace Lakeway. And I'm gonna say that again and again, that, that needs to happen, and we just have to find a way as a community to make that happen. That's my report.
Well, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Okay, I need a motion to go into non-public session, please.
Make a motion to enter into non-public session under paragraph two, section three of the R S A ninety-one, A U colon three, of the right to know law. Or number two, the hiring of any person of a public employee. Number three, matters that would adversely affect the reputation of any person other than a member of the board. Any additional?
Taking this.
Taking with us the superintendent, and Tom, and the business manager.
All in favor, we'll call a vote.
Need a second.
Second. Off the line.
Cook.
Allen.
Nelson. Thank you, Paul.